So we will now move on to our 910, which we are, we have, we are a little over, but we'll go ahead and move on to it. So 6.3, consideration of update on 2024 activities of the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority and presentation on the invasive Mediterranean oak borer from LCCRA partner, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. First, I will go ahead and give this to the Chair of this JPA Supervisor Paeska.
Yeah, we're really excited to have this update from Lake County Risk Reduction Authority and presentation by Clerk. So I want to invite everybody up here who's a part of this. Is John going to be on Zoom?
Yes, John is on Zoom.
Okay. Good morning.
Van de Vort.
So we'll start with the RRA update and should, do you see John?
I do.
Okay.
We're good? We're waiting for John. While we're waiting for John, I'll just make a quick statement. Humbly request that we list our questions and ask at the end of this presentation and we'll go forward after this presentation with the oak, Mediterranean oak borer. When we have that presentation, we'll answer those questions. So let's try to get through the presentation, then ask questions. We'll give it to the public and go from there. That way we can get through this because as you know, we have a robust agenda. So I was giving her a chance too, so I just made the opportunity for her to find.
Great. John, are you available?
Hello, folks. Can everyone hear me?
We can.
Okay, perfect. I am, and I'm unable to turn on my video. Zoom, Zoom is not permitting me. I'm not sure if that's required or if there's an update to the settings that can be made by the host. I'm also happy to move forward if my video cannot be turned on.
We have a sideshow?
Yes, John has it. John, can you share? Are you, do you have that ability?
It is not permitting me. Terry, are you able to, to share the slides? Apologies.
I'm not at the moment.
Do you want to try it again?
Try it again, John.
While we're waiting for them, Will, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. So Will Evans. Is this on?
It is.
Yes, you just have to speak into it.
Yeah, Will Evans, I'm the co-founder and Executive Director of Clerk, the Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. We're a 501(c)(3) nonprofit based right here in Lake County, working to address the problems that come about at the intersection of the environment and the economy. And I know we're short on time, so I will pass it off to my colleague, Julia.
Hello, I'm Julia. I'm the newest biologist at Clear Lake Environmental Research Center.
All right, thank you. Terry, we got it up. So did you have anything else or?
No, we can go ahead. John Van de Vort is an employee of the Lake County Resource Conservation District and serves as the facilitator of the RRA, thanks to funding under the Adaptation Planning Grant Program. So John?
Thank you so much, Terry. And I was able to get my camera on. So it is so great to see everyone. Apologies, just one moment while I, okay. There we are. Well, thank you all so much for having me today. My name is John Van de Vort, Conservation Program Manager with the Lake County Resource Conservation District. I currently serve as the facilitator and coordinator for the Lake County Community Risk Reduction Authority, often referred to as the LCCRA or simply the RRA. And I'm excited to join you all today to provide an overview of some of the RRA's programming from the last year, as well as highlight some of the priorities that we are looking towards in 2025. So thank you all once again for the opportunity to be here today. So for those less familiar with the RRA, I would like to take just a moment to share a little bit about how it was formed and the primary purpose that it serves to the greater Lake County community. The RRA was originally created in 2018 through a joint powers agreement between the County of Lake and numerous local fire protection districts. And the RRA was really formed in direct response to the series of devastating wildfires that we are all familiar with and really spurred the, the realization that more effective coordination was required between local government entities to ensure that those government entities are more effectively and able to respond and remain resilient to natural disasters such as wildfires. As such, the RRA seeks to accomplish the goals that you see listed on the slide in front of you. Primarily, the RRA acts as a coordinating body and mechanism for local government agencies working on preparedness and resiliency efforts and allows them to more effectively share resources, collaborate, and ensure effective use of local government authority. Second, the RRA works to provide low or no cost programs to the public to support the development of programs that bolster community resilience at the local scale. And this has included support for local firewise communities, community-based organizations, all advancing local resilience efforts. And finally, the RRA seeks to provide and effectively elevate existing resources to the public to ensure effective assessment and management of the risks posed from natural disasters. And this has included both federal and statewide resources developed by agencies such as the U.S. Forest Service, as well as CAL FIRE, and resources developed by local agencies to Lake County. So in terms of how the RRA is governed, it is actively governed by a Board of Directors, which includes representatives from local city and county governments, as well as fire protection districts, water districts, and Native sovereign nations. And the Board is currently led by Supervisor Paeska, who was elected to the position of Chair just over a month ago, following the leadership of past Chair Moak Simon. Now, I'd like to take just a moment to thank both Chair Paeska and Past Chair Simon for the leadership and guidance that they continue to provide to the RRA. So thank you both. And as for ongoing administrative support, that is currently provided by staff of the Lake County Resource Conservation District, that would be myself. And a significant portion of my time is currently provided through a grant agreement between the County of Lake and the RCB, which I will discuss in greater detail a little later on in the presentation and was alluded to by Terry prior to my, prior to my start. So that's a little bit about what we do. How have we been doing it over the past year? Well, in 2024, the RRA hosted its 12 regular monthly meetings in various meeting locations across Lake County in an effort to ensure ease of accessibility to individuals based around the county. And these meetings really primarily serve as an opportunity for community members, practitioners, and representatives of local government agencies to provide updates to one another, share resources and best practices, as well as coordinate around upcoming relevant funding opportunities. In early 2024, the RRA also hosted one special meeting, which was focused on providing DEI learnings to RRA directors. This was required under the grant that currently primarily supports the RRA. And the RRA also launched a number of original resources, including a YouTube channel and an RRA website, which are actively being built out, but will soon host all RRA-developed resources and materials and serve as a clearinghouse for all materials discussed within the context of the RRA. Additionally, in 2024, the RRA launched two subcommittees. The biomass subcommittee, which is supported by a biomass utilization pilot project, which is funded through the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, as well as a grants best fit subcommittee, which is focused on supporting effective coordination around upcoming funding opportunities and reducing competition amongst Lake County partner agencies wherever possible and ensuring that we are really drawing down as much funding from private, state, federal, and philanthropic sources into Lake County as possible. The RRA also conducted some programming that you do not see included on this list. For instance, the RRA also hosted two virtual town hall meetings, the first of which featured a presentation from Dr. Francisca Santana, Assistant Professor at the University of Washington, where she presented on her findings regarding how Northern California communities are actively adapting to wildfire events. And the, the second town hall featured a presentation on Mediterranean oak borer from Michael Jones, who currently serves as Forestry Advisor for Sonoma, Mendocino, and Lake Counties. Mediterranean oak borer, or MOB, which you will all hear about from our partners over at Clerk immediately after my time, certainly being a priority of Lake County practitioners in recent years. So to discuss the kind of fiscal progress that the RRA has made, I'll actually back up just a little bit further to 2023, where the RRA was able to acquire funding for dedicated administrative support through a collaborative grant proposal that was developed by the County of Lake and the Lake County Resource Conservation District. This project titled Planning for an Equitable, Climate-Safe Lake also provides support for the development of Lake County's county-wide climate action plan, as well as the implementation of a number of action items from the local hazard mitigation plan. This effort is funded through the Adaptation Planning Grant Program, or APGP, from the Governor's Office of Land Use and Climate Innovation, previously known as the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, or OPR, as most folks likely, likely know it. And this opportunity provides $89,500 in funding for administrative support for the RRA from the beginning of the grant term in early 2023 through the end of 2025, so through the end of this year. So looking forward, there is some programming that I look forward to highlighting for all of you. Between now and November of 2025, we will be hosting two additional workshops focused on providing DEI learnings to RRA leadership and members, again, as is required under the grant that currently supports the RRA. The RRA also recently launched a new subcommittee, which is focused on water use for fire suppression. The subcommittee is facilitated by the county's Aunt Terri Logsdon, and this will cover topics such as fire flow testing for hydrants, new construction requiring interior sprinklers for fire suppression, drought and water storage, as well as addressing county-wide water system capacity. In the coming weeks, the RRA is also going to relaunch its Grants Best Fit Subcommittee with some updated resources and materials to ensure that this group is able to continue to effectively meet the immediate needs of those participating in this group. And then as for the kind of broader strategic direction of the RRA in 2025, over the next year, it's certainly going to be a focus to identify ongoing sustained funding for administrative support, recognizing that the current grant does only go through the end of 2025. And it's also going to be a priority to ensure that RRA membership is really representative of the communities of Lake County, which is why we are currently conducting an analysis to identify organizations that are active within Lake County but not actively participating in the RRA. This is going to inform additional outreach efforts taking place later on in the year. And that was my admittedly pretty brief and high-level overview of the RRA's programming over the last year, but I am happy to take any questions. And I, of course, encourage anyone to reach out to me regarding questions for the RRA or if they're looking for any additional information on the RRA at the email that you see on the, on the slide in front of you. So thank you all once again for the opportunity to speak today. It's greatly appreciated, and I look forward to continuing to, working with many of you and continuing to provide updates on the activity of the RRA.
Thank you for that, John. Did you want to add anything, Terry or Will or?
I will.
Okay, go ahead.
I'll just add that getting the funding in 2023 has been a massive game changer so that we could have finally staffed to support the RRA. It's, you know, it's, it, over the years prior to that, everyone would come together with the ideas of things that we wanted to do, but it was really hard to activate any of those ideas without staff. So having staff in place last year and going into this year is just critically important. We are continuing to look for ongoing funding to continue the support. It's just going to be one of those things that we have to continue to hustle. So thanks to the RCD for all of their help over this year, and I'm looking at all of you. Thank you so much. It's been a really incredible year, and we'll hear a little bit later more from the RCD on a lot of the other programming that we've been developing. So it's a very exciting morning.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, I appreciate the update and definitely big strides have been made. I know I've been pushy about the Risk Reduction Authority in the sense that a JPA functions in a certain way. You guys are in your infancy stage. I want to maybe use that word inappropriately because you've been around for quite some time now, but yet you're, you're growing. And obviously you needed to be able to grow financially and in capacity to be able to handle these things. Just kind of curious as to the future, as you obtain more grant funding or any other source that you get funding from, will those funds be going to the RRA or are those funds going to continue to go to the RCD? Just because I think the best way would be for any joint powers to have that money go into their accounts versus RCD. Right now, it's been very much feeding RCD in order to get them into better capacity, but in the long run, based on my understanding of joint powers authority, typically the money would go into a RRA fund and not the contractor that has been hired to run the RRA. Just kind of curious what the next steps might be.
I'm happy to respond to that. I think that we are actively kind of charting that path forward. And part of the biomass utilization pilot project that I mentioned earlier, in an effort through that pilot project, those contractors are working to identify potential funding mechanisms for the RRA to ensure sustainability long-term. And we're exploring really a suite of options at the moment to ensure that the RRA does continue to be sustainable year over year. And this, you know, some of the options we're considering are additional grant funding, as well as fee for services that we can provide to practitioners within the county. We're really exploring a number of options to ensure that the RRA itself is able to continue to, to remain steady in, in its funding.
Okay. I'm, I'm not certain that that, I appreciate the answer. I'm not sure that that answered it, but I'll just keep being patient and, and paying attention. And I guess I'll, I'll just be blunt in, in my clarification. I'll just use the Area Planning Council as an example. We do not, we, we have a contract with the contractor that runs the APC, and the money is at the APC, and then we spend that money by paying the contractor. Right now, so far, the funding has gone directly to other agencies and the RR, and correct me if I'm wrong, and the RRA has not necessarily been the, the owner or the recipient of the grants that have been accessed thus far. I think that's perfectly fine as there's a growth stage. In order to get to a full-blown joint powers authority, I'm just hoping that at one point it will go to the, there is the risk authority has its own account, it receives all the grants that it goes after, and then it provides those grants through contracts or other ways to those people or else I, I, in my opinion, if we continue this way, at one point, we have to deal with the conflict of interest that the rest, the RCD can't have two boards.
Are you, are you done?
Yes.
Okay. So are you on the Workforce Alliance of the North Bay?
I just started.
Yeah, it's a couple of years back when I joined initially, they went through the County of Napa, and then once it progressed, then we pulled it back into the R or the JPA. I think it's, it's just one of those growing phases because at one time they had a hard time getting everything to the full JPA because they were the admin group. And then we started working on different transitions. And so I think that, that could be, that should be the path here, if that makes sense.
Well, yeah, so let me just clear this up. The ABG funding is for staffing the RRA. The RRA still gets contributions from all the members, and that's specifically for programming. And we do have plans for more programming. We, we have had two virtual town halls this year. We've got a lot going on. What John was talking about with the biomass plan, that is, it's a little, a little much to unpack here right now, but that is to build in sustainable funding for other projects in the future. We are in the planning phase of that under the OPR, LCI grant. So there's a lot going on. The RRA has a lot of priorities, but we can't accomplish anything without staffing. And so what we're looking for, for funding for the RCD is to continue to have that capacity to run the meetings, to run the subcommittees, to keep the website updated, to, and the YouTube channel, which you can find all of our resources. So there's a lot going on that's being put out to the public here. I don't understand really what you're getting at.
I think it's going to get to what you're talking about eventually. I think right now it's just, you're, and I bring up the WANB Workforce Alliance of the North Bay because that's what I remember. It's a similarity to how it should be eventually. And so I kind of see that eventually happening with JPAs.
And just as a clarification, part of the process with the consultants with LCI for the biomass utilization pilot project, there is a lawyer, Christiana Darlington, who works specifically with JPAs, working on biomass, who will take a look at the foundation documents and the bylaws and make any recommendations for changes. At the recent election of the RRA in January, one of the items they vote on is the authorizing entity, which has been the County of Lake and remains it. So it's, there's the funding in APGP comes to the RRA, the county, because the county does the fiscal portion of it. And so the indirect from the APGP covers that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. So I was a little off on my, like, an analyzation, so thank you for that.
You were there like a year or two ago, but we've made a lot of progress.
And I haven't been on.
It's okay.
Any other questions here? All right, open up to the public for this item. If there's anyone that would like to comment on this portion of the presentation?
Quite a few of the directors in the audience.
Yeah, and they're all sitting in the back, so I don't know what that means. Kevin Ingram, City Manager with the City of Lakeport, and also a member or alternate on occasion representing the City of Lakeport on the Risk Reduction Authority. And I just wanted to speak to that point too. I mean, having been on it now for two or three years, we've made a tremendous amount of growth in those past two years, and that's largely due to the cooperation and having access to the RCD staff in there and kind of pushing forward. So I, I agree absolutely with, with Supervisor Sabatier in regards to, you know, one of our main focuses being that sustainability aspect and be able to funding ourselves. I'm not quite sure, I can only speak for myself, I'm not quite sure that the APC model would be, would be the direction that we'd want to go. But I mean, that absolutely is always on our mind. I mean, I think every, every meeting we, you know, we, we get disgusted by, you know, how much of our money is having to go to saving for the eventual every other year audit and then what is not available for us to move. So we're making strides in that department, but I also don't want to underestimate just the general convening aspect of this group as well. You know, we have similar JPAs that just consist of the three jurisdictions. This one consists of, you know, tribal membership, water districts, fire, fire districts, and you know, other, other entities as well, you know, addressing some really big issues that only can be done at that regional level. I mean, a lot of our focus, obviously, has been on wildfire risk, but I mean, we also have a number of other risks that we're subject to. So I just wanted to compliment RCD, you know, and then Terry as well for, I mean, we've made some great strides in that past two years. So I would say we've, we've moved beyond the infancy stage. I don't know quite where we're at in that process, but I'm looking forward to the next couple of years, especially in regards to some of the work that's coming out of this biomass subcommittee thing. I think that absolutely is going to have some options for us being a sustainable entity monetarily in the future. And then, but at the same time, the convening aspects, the best fit management group, you know, providing that additional partnership to some of our, you know, smaller grassroots organizations can't be overlooked. So I'm very, very excited to have been a part of it for the past couple of years and looking forward to the, the future couple of years and glad to have Supervisor Crandall back on the team as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chamber that would like to comment on this presentation? Anyone on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board if there's any final thoughts before we move on to the next one. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to item B. I think I read it off, so it's the presentation for the Mediterranean oak borer.
Have you been promoted to panelist, Julia?
I am not seen.
Julia Clickard? You should get an invitation in just a second. And since you're in chamber, I guess you don't need your camera.
Hello, I'm Julia Clicker, the newest biologist at Clear Lake Environmental Research Center. I'm going to present our Mediterranean oak borer action plan, which includes a lot of identification and just a lot of general information we have gathered about how we, as a community, can address this impact. Do you want to note that Mike Jones, Curtis Ewing, and UCNR have been incredible resources in the creation of this action plan? Generally, this presentation will cover four major topics. Tree symptoms, what you'll see in the field or on local property. Mob information, specifics on the beetle and its life cycle. Woody material treatment, what to do with downed branches and wood. And survey and outreach, Clerk's reporting system, other resources, and our plan moving First of all, let's talk about the Mediterranean oak borer and how it impacts trees. Scientific name is Xyloborus monographis, but for this presentation, we're shortening down Mediterranean oak borer to MOB to save a little bit of time. The most prominent question about MOB is how will we be able to tell if a tree has it? This information is vital in identifying an outbreak when it first begins. Here are the main symptoms to look for. Black trellis systems in the shallow layers of the tree, the xylem. Tiny circular holes in the bark. Pale boring dust around the holes and base of the tree. Patchy dieback starting from the tips of the branch. Now, please keep in mind that there are other stressors that can cause similar changes in a tree. Water stress, especially after this hot summer, can cause large amounts of browning or dying within areas of the tree. Climate change, heat, fires, these can impact trees in a similar fashion. High winds can physically damage trees and branches, opening wounds or killing off small sections. And of course, there are other pests or diseases such as sudden oak death or bark beetles. The best way to check for MOB are to look for the symptoms previously mentioned. Black trellis system, tiny circular holes in the bark, pale boring dust, and patchy branch dieback. So let's see the biology and life cycle of MOB. This is for the identification of both the actual insect itself, as well as the life cycle and impact. MOB is a small reddish-brown beetle. As you can see in these images, its coloration can vary between individuals and sexes. These insects are very small and are rarely spotted during inspection unless the tree is physically cracked open to see the galleries. One way differentiated from the other oak bores and brocha beetles are these small raised bumps on the back of the shell, a hard covering that protects the flight wings of the females, right here. While females have the bumps, there are some other sexually dimorphic characteristics between female and male MOB. The female are notably larger, closer in size to pencil lead, and capable of flight. Males, on the other hand, are smaller and flightless, but feature this rhinoceros horn right here. Now, onto its eggs and general life cycle. A single unmated female can be the start of infestation. When she arrives in a new branch or tree, she begins to lay unfertilized eggs that develop into males. She can then mate with the males to produce fertilized eggs that will become yet more females. Females continue to expand the galleries and mate until they leave the parent gallery system to attack the same host tree or a new tree, beginning the cycle once more. Now, within those trees, each can house two to three generations of MOB. It takes about five to eight weeks to develop from egg to adult, which means they can have two or more generations within one year. Now, they do have a period of inactivity. In California with our climate, mated females over winter within their galleries and then their peak emergence period begins in late winter or spring, about when the temperature can reach 80 degrees Fahrenheit. Generally, our safest estimate of their inactive period is between November and January. This is the period you would want to take down infested wood, branches, or move its woody material. The peak is between March and May, which is the most dangerous time to prove or move such material. Now, let's look at their actual impact on trees. When they burrow, their galleries appear in these black trellis systems. MOB move from the tip of the branch all the way down to the trunk. They rarely split off to go back and up an unaffected branch they passed by. As the MOB move down the branch or trunk, their galleries become even more crowded and well-developed, eventually cutting off water flow and ultimately girdling the tree. That's not the only danger the galleries possess. The black color originates from the fungus that they cultivate. Now, all ambrosia beetles have fungal associations. MOB is associated with Rhaphylia infusarium in both its native range and in California. Female MOB carry these fungi in pockets, mycangia, above the mandibles. When a female attacks a new host, it inoculates the tree with a fungus, which then spreads to the tree's xylem or sapwood. The female can also pick up hitchhiking pathogens that can establish inside the tree during their excavation. So let's look at how it can impact our county and local areas. So, let's look at how it can impact our county and local areas. Well, it has some preferred habitat characteristics. We can see that it favors elevations below 1,500 feet, but can tolerate 1,500 to 2,000 feet. Lake County has an enormous range in elevation from 640 feet, which is easily in its habitat range, to 6,900 feet. What we should consider is that mob is almost exclusively found in oak-dominated stands. California oak woodlands range from 500 feet to 3,000 feet, a perfect range for mob in Lake County. Unlike in Europe, mob is much more specialized in California. Generally, it most commonly attacks white oak, more specifically valley oak in California, while the California black oak has only seen a single tree affected in extremely limited attack. How does this impact us? Well, here's a list of the more common oaks within Lake County. And let's reference it against species that mob attacks in California. As we can see, all four species are found within our county. This is a wonderful map created by the University of California Agricultural and Natural Resources, UCNR, on their website for mentoring oak bore. It took years to estimate exactly how long mob has been in California, but now we can see the enormous jump in affected area between 2021, 2023, and just last year, 2024. Just last year, its distribution has grown to encompass most of Lake County. So yes, it is definitely a danger and a lot closer than we'd like. So there's a big question of what can we do if we do suspect mob? Pruning of infested tree limbs could be viable, although it's currently unknown how far the fungus spreads past the mob galleries. Once the mob infestation reaches the trunk of the tree, pruning limbs will not remove mob. Infestation will move downwards from its initial point. You'll want to take pictures of the branch before it loses its leaves in order to help identify which branch needs to be pruned. The branches must be pruned all the way up to the trunk in order to be effective. Avoid cutting the woody material or moving it before you treat it in order to stop mob from dispersing to other nearby trees. As we're treating the wood, pruning should be done during the tree's dormancy period in order to minimize stress on the tree. Now, once finished pruning or removing infested wood, chipping is a frequently used option, since it can work with a lot of material and you can treat the wood right after chipping. Any handling or moving of firewood should be done during the low activity period of mob, again between November and January. The chip should be one inch or less in diameter. Please avoid moving after cutting. Remember, a single unmated female can start infestation, so by moving chips, it can create a whole new infested area. Prune firewood material should be safe after two years in an area, give or take. Of the woody debris treatments, burying is not really recommended. The wood would need to be buried deep enough that beetles could not see light to escape, so at least five inches below the surface. Next, solarization uses tarps to expose the woody material to the sun's heat over a long period of time in order to kill off the fungus in the mob. Solarization isn't considered effective or practical. It won't work unless vented with fine stainless steel mesh of one millimeter or less. It is also no longer recommended by Oregon. Then, burning. This is helpful because burning can occur during the key winter months where mob is dormant. Burning can also be performed with a portable incinerator on site, which provides flexibility and treating numerous trees and reduces the risk of stress, since you don't have to move the wood. Finally, heat treating wood is a possible option for firewood, since it starts with, since it's already used when transporting firewood or other wooden materials long distances in order to prevent the spread of diseases or pests. You'll want a minimum of 104 degrees Fahrenheit for 60 minutes when treating the wood. It's achievable by a broad range of firewood kilns and available even if the climate or season would prevent solarization or burning. Using kilns to treat wood also means it doesn't necessarily need to be chipped by passing that step. Now, the next step of management: early detection. Locals know their area the best. You see it every day, you see the changes and what looks wrong. That's why early detection depends on recruiting community members and creating an easy source for reporting and learning about what to do when you do find mob. Our main method of early detection is a project page and survey on our website. We created this with intent of being an easily accessible source of information for the community as well as allowing us to take a rough survey of affected trees. We can then follow up on submitted information, assess infestation severity, and provide this resource to UCNR and local and state monitoring programs. You can find the mob monitoring project on our homepage, right here under Projects. Our biological technician, Hannah Shapiro, and our operations outreach coordinator, Rachel Avia, did an incredible job putting together the website, dashboard, and survey that we're going to see. Below the informational sections, there are two buttons near the bottom of the page. The first button will lead to our mob survey dashboard. In a short summary of this page, here's a basic blurb about mob along with a link to our project website. This graph shows how my reports have been submitted over time. This little legend shows what the colors of the heat map mean, with colder, bluer colors showing a higher concentration of mob sightings. And this is the actual map. You can zoom in and out and scroll around the county. Finally, this column on the far right shows some basic information about each point on the map. Let's go back to the project page. The second button leads to the survey. Overall, this survey is meant to be an early warning and reporting tool that the community can access. It asks them basic information such as date and location of the mob-infested tree, as well as some questions about if you've seen specific symptoms. Ultimately, it's meant to keep our communities informed and share what we've gathered with local and state agencies. We hope to pair this mob survey with another form of early detection: tracking the transport of firewood or woody materials. We've already contacted local forest management professionals in order to start up this program, but we're always looking for more contacts. Generally, we hope to use something similar to the mob survey to track where firewood or downed woody material is being transported. The end goal is that we can compare these, compare these results against where mob is spreading to see if there's a definite link and what the community can help do to prevent it. On the subject of community, here are numerous agencies we are currently working with. It's been incredible for helping to spread out the program, and of course, we're always looking for more groups. We're currently working with Mike Jones, Curtis Ewing, to create short free train seminars for both professionals and general public. For arborists of, or forestry management, trains would include information on the signs and symptoms of mob as well as how to mitigate the spread on work sites. For the public, the presentation would focus on the signs and symptoms, how they can protect their trees, and contact information with willing professionals who could identify mob infestations. Overall, our goal is to use the survey and reporting tools to gather data in order to obtain a grant for management, similar to Oregon's Mobile Burn Unit or other methods as the situation develops. Clerk is also planning to host a Q&amp;A open house, meaning they'll provide space for the public to speak with the professionals about any further questions they have regarding management. And that's it for the presentation. We'll end on an image of mob, of a mob beetle that was taken by our team in our very own Lake County. Thank you so much for the opportunity to present on the Mediterranean Oak Bore.
Thank you.
Anything to finish with? Supervisor Spatier?
Thank you so much, Julia, and Will. I just want to, this is just one of the best illustrations of the work that the RRA has been doing over the years. We talked about this in our meetings. Thank you, Curtis, for being here. Dr. Jones is one of our experts, too, that is always helping us and contributing. Actually, he's the one that alerted us to mob, I think it was in 2020?
Two, three.
Three, early 23. Yeah, so we quickly produced the town hall with, using the funds that we had gotten through the grants and through our contributions, so one of our really great programs. And it's up on our YouTube channel for everyone that wants to look back on it. It's a little bit different. That one has Mike Jones, so I think both of these presentations work really well together. And then Clerk just jumping in, both feet, head first, actually. That was Tracy Klein, because she started to notice mob in the Soda Bay Corridor area in South Lakeport, noticed that it happened, it started to really expand its footprint during the PG&E trimming last year, and we have PG&E in the room. PG&E has been part of these conversations to get their workers who are out in the field to adopt these best practices. So it really just started with these small conversations with the Risk Reduction Authority and through this collaboration expanded to where we are now. It's been, it's, it has been about a year and a half, but we've made really great progress. It's still expanding all the way across the county, so it is critical that we adopt these practices unilaterally and really spread the word about not moving firewood. We know that that unfortunately has been the cause probably of getting it all across the county. So I just want to pause here. I just want to express my deep gratitude to Clerk and the RRA staff for picking this up and running with it, because that's really what this collaboration is about, is leveraging all of our resources and our relationships and our funding sources. And I just want to invite Curtis. Do you have anything that you want to add? He's our reg, he is our expert who has been critical for helping us collect data for all tree mortality over the past, I think, four years now. So thank you so much, Curtis.
You're welcome, and I'm very impressed with what you're doing in Lake County. You're way ahead of the other counties. We are now up to seven infested counties. There was a big jump after two years. It was originally discovered in 2017, but only the fungus was identified. The beetles were thrown away. Then the beetles were recollected in 2019 in October in Calistoga, and that is clearly the center of where the infestation started. But unfortunately, the wood was just cut and piled on the side of the road, and we know what happens to wood when it's cut, especially oak wood, and piled on the side of the road. People were, in fact, just taking off the infested parts and hauling that away for some reason, which is a little strange. Maybe they were doing woodworking with it. It's, it spreads pretty efficiently, because as Julia said, they are, they just sit in the wood during the winter, so that's when the wood gets cut up, that's when it gets spread. She said that unmated females can infest trees, but actually, most of them are mated. The thing is, when they leave their trees, so those ones have an extra generation that they can complete. And we have dissected trees in November, they're still laying eggs, so there's at least three, maybe four generations a year. We believe now, Mike Jones and I have been tracking trees since 2020. There were trees that were infested in 2020 which are still alive, so it's at least five to 10 years, and it was probably in Napa since 2010 or earlier. So it had a lot of time to spread. We're just starting to get some anecdotal evidence that treatments with fungicides may have some at least effect where they allow the tree's own defenses to wall off that fungus that Julia mentioned that's carried in their jaws, and that's what actually kills the trees. That clogs the sapwood of the tree and kills the tree. So it's just anecdotal. We are looking for arborists who have been treating trees to give us feedback. I have one really good collaborator in Napa, so he's been treating trees since 2017. Many of those are still alive. He's been, just gave me some wood for the first time that showed that after he treated it, there's almost no infestation. The fungus got walled off and it was able to put down six, seven new rings with very minor effects on it. You can't do this at a forest scale because it would require treatment every year or two. But, and I can't recommend anything, but there's just a few fungicides that are certified in California. If anyone has any questions that I can answer, I'd be glad to do it.
Thank you for that. Supervisor Spatier? And then Supervisor Owen?
Yeah, thank you for the presentation. I totally understand the issue with the firewood. You knock down a tree or you find a tree that you cut up and then eventually you sell it to somebody, you got to bring it to their location or they have to come and pick it up and bring it to their location, and then it hangs out until eventually it gets used. So I totally understand that. I feel like that is a bit of a, I don't want to say underground economy, but it's, it's not, you have to know who does that type of work. There's not too many that are out in the open that are advertising and things like that. And so how, what is the plan to try and to get people on board? Because I see here you have potentially heated up to 140 degrees. Who has access to those things that can make that happen? Because they can't just sell firewood exactly only where they got the firewood from. That limits their economy. And so what is the potential plan on reaching out to them? Maybe a co-op access to a heating device, a kiln of sorts? I don't know. Like, I just, I don't have an understanding of how we solve it. I understand the issue completely, and I know you're working on, wondering what your thoughts are and where you're going.
Well, like you said, that's, the actual getting a kiln for this is kind of difficult to do, but, so the first thing is education and making sure everybody's aware of it, which is kind of what made it get up on the radar to begin with. But we are planning an open house in the next few weeks. It's probably going to be at the Carnegie Library if we can get that straightened out. We have, as Julia mentioned, a database of all the tree care companies, that a lot of them do firewood on the side, and it's a way to get to the people that are actually engaged in it. But if you can identify that this is logs that shouldn't be moved, then that's the first step of not moving them. At least at this point, you know, I haven't seen it so widespread that it's going to impact either those people's livelihoods because there's enough wood elsewhere. But that's why we wanted to keep it that way and try not to spread it any more than it already is. I don't know if you have anything else to add?
Yeah, I was on a meeting for the biomass utilization pilot project for the North Coast Resource Partnership, and one of their partners is working with Cal Poly Humboldt on a mobile kiln that is panelized so that it can be easily broken down and moved. And so I have connected both Clerk and the RCD to that organization. I think it's a nonprofit, I can't remember the name, that's working with Cal Poly Humboldt to say, if you get that figured out, we want to buy some.
And, oh, so sorry, am I, is it possible to just finish? I appreciate the answer, and obviously, we're looking, we're still seeking solutions and just putting it out there. It is an emergency. It has been an emergency for at least, what, three years now? I believe is when we first declared it.
It was May 22.
Something along those lines.
It's a different emergency.
But still, it's within the tree mortality issue.
It's not. And that is something for us to consider, is a separate emergency. Napa County did do a separate emergency. Our existing tree mortality is tied to the drought.
Specifically drought.
And this is not tied to the drought. So it's something for us to consider. That's why we're doing all this investigation to understand how the county should move forward and if and when we should do a declaration.
And I can appreciate the clarification. I still think there's a connection to a drought that makes it less possible to fight against this infestation, so I see that as having a small connection to it. And I just think in emergency, is there a way to looking at maybe permits for those who are cutting down firewood to try and get them to understand, and here are the rules for those who are going to be doing, like, what's available to us within any kind of emergency that we're dealing with to try and really slow that down? I'm open for anything that you guys come back with, but I appreciate the presentation.
I'll just add one more thing that, you know, we're working on a proposal for the Community Wildfire Defense Grant Round Three, which is due March 14th now. The, this will be the third proposal from Clerk, and the first two focused on community chipping, fuel breaks. This third one's going to focus on addressing, the bulk of it's going to focus on addressing this issue and identifying trees and having a way to actually deal with them on site, and there will be funding to support it. We're still working on it, and there's a little bit of question if those funds are actually going to be available, but we're still going to go after them and pursue it as if they are.
Thank you. Supervisor Owen?
Yes, I was wondering, I know you cannot make a recommendation on fungal, fungicides for those trees, but are there a list of them that would, that are effective for the trees on your site, on your website?
We haven't gotten that far yet. Right now, we're searching for funding and a lab, say at UC Davis or at Berkeley or Humboldt, that would be willing to carry out a more rigorous analysis of them. I mean, I could supply you with a list by email of what's certified for California. I think there's three.
Okay.
One is a topical and two are injected into the tree. The arborist that's, who is actually the person who first discovered the beetle in 2017, he's the same one I'm still working with. He is, he cut out the insecticide because it was too expensive, and he is switching over to just the topical because it is much less expensive, not only for the chemical, but obviously for application. So I'm kind of working with him to try to work up a proposal, and hopefully, within the next year, we'll start doing a little more with that.
And following up with that... And following up with that, would there be something possibly on the horizon that could be sprayed perhaps on the downed trees?
Well, that's a completely different question. That's going to be something fairly toxic, and I think you would have much more issue with that.
Okay.
Another thing that can be done with the firewood, we just had a meeting in, with the LA County people because they have another invasive beetle, which is getting close now unfortunately. Here, it just made a jump to San Jose, which is much worse than Mediterranean oak bore. And they are trying to get some of the first firewood regulations in place in LA. They would not be something with like the force of law behind them. They'd be more like recommendations and trying to coordinate because it's really not feasible to try to, as you said, it's a, it's a diffuse industry, and to try to regulate it is just not possible. This has been something we talk about every year for, I've been here for almost ten years, and it's apparently something that's been talked about for twenty or thirty years. But if you have a yard and you age this wood, I mean, literally, if you cut it in the fall, all the beetles will pretty much be gone, ninety-nine point nine percent by July of that year. We recommend two years just so people don't cut corners, which, you know, when they cut corners, we get that full year. So you could start to think about just having people aging their wood in one place before they disperse it out. And at least that cuts out one stage of the dispersal. That's what I, that's what we kind of came to the conclusion on, is some system like that for LA to slow the spread of their pests.
Awesome. Thank you.
And if anyone else has any questions, when we take a break here shortly, if you want to talk with him off the side, we'll go from there. Anything else from the board? Thank you, everyone, for this. Did you have anything else?
Mike Jones has his hand up in the Zoom room.
I didn't see that. Go ahead, Mike.
Good morning, Chair Crandall and Supervisors. Yeah, Michael Jones, UC Extension Forest for Lake. Curtis kind of just caught some of the things I wanted to mention, but I, you know, there is no regulation for this pest, so it's all about education. And yes, aging wood on site before you move it is a very effective strategy for limiting spread, at least through human pathways. So, you know, that doesn't require treating all wood. That certainly is an ideal goal, right, of having certified treated wood? But making sure you're not moving it right after you cut it is really important. So hopefully, that doesn't create too much of a barrier. And as, and as, you all mentioned, Evan mentioned, plenty of cut wood in Lake County for firewood that we can kind of maybe think about aging oak before we spread it too far. And then for the chemicals, you know, we, I just hesitate to really provide any information on chemical control at this point. We have done no research. We have no data to suggest efficacy or side effects or unintended impacts. So it also can produce a false sense of hope. We don't know if the trees that are surviving that we've been working with arborists on is because it's a slow rate of infestation within those trees or they have some natural resistance. So I hesitate at this time to really push forward with providing that information. Certainly talking to an arborist, they'll give you that data, but again, we have no idea if it's a viable treatment option for this particular pest. So give us time to kind of start studying those questions and really get some robust answers to, to, you know, provide landowners and land managers and stewards to, before we kind of start promoting some of those ideas. But thank you all for having this item on the agenda. This is an important topic that we're dealing with. And it sounds like, as Curtis mentioned, we need to start talking about the Mesa Shaw Holbores as well and G-Sob and some of the other oak pests that are kind of in California and potentially future challenges in this space. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else to finish with? Thank you.
Just one, just one last thing is, like he mentioned, and in your presentation, you know, less than a year ago, we were talking about solarization being the way to do it, and now it's not. So with Dr. Jones saying he's still studying these, you know, different fungicides, it's going to keep changing, so.
You had something else?
Yeah, just a brief question. From the end user, burning fungus wood, is there any potential issues there? Just to also educate out there or nothing known at this moment?
Yeah, Michael Jones, UC Extension Forest again. No, and the other nice thing about this particular pathogen, at least the ones we've been studying with our colleagues at Davis, is that it's really only active within the tree, so you can chip this material and use this chip as mulch and not have the risk of it spreading to other trees. So really, we're just talking about standing living trees being the important part of the disease complex, but once that material is processed and chipped, it's, you know, viable. And also burning it is not present a health risk as far as, you know, this family of fungi has never shown to be a human pathogen.
Yeah, and also, it's not going to spread to other trees. I don't know if Mike knows this, but the lab in Berkeley inoculated our monitoring trees at the arborist yard directly, and it didn't infect any of the trees. So there does seem to be some sort of strange synergy between the beetle and the fungus to actually get it into the tree. And that's another thing we need to research because it's anecdotal at this point, just like I was saying with the fungicide. It's anecdotal. It looks like it may work, it may not. But it's another aspect of its biology, and often, some of these systems that are even fairly simple can take ten, twenty years to really understand. So we, we need to be patient and we need to raise awareness so that we can get more people interested in doing research on it.
All right, thank you. With that, I'm going to close this item before.
We already did.
I don't think we did public because we've got.
Okay, well, I'll open it to public input. I thought I did.
Yeah, thank you. Well, I think you did, but there was two items, so I didn't speak on the first one. My name is Jason Tarmino. I'm your local government affairs rep from PG&E. And I wanted to say that I've been participating in the tree health, forest health for maybe the past year, and we're actively engaged. I had a meeting yesterday with the regional manager who handles all of our veg management for this region. He's been having meetings about the Mediterranean oak bore, about changing practices, best management practices. So we'll be, continue to be engaged on this because we're one of the biggest tree cutters in the state. And, you know, being a good partner is important to us. I know that everyone is concerned about their bills, but we do a lot more at PG&E, and so we're engaged on this issue and many others, and appreciate the collaboration. Thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Is there anyone else that would like to comment on this? Apologize, I know it seems like I'm rushing, but we have a giant agenda, so. Okay, no one on Zoom? All right, I'll bring it back to the board in case there is. All right. With that, thank you very much, Terry, Will. And thank you very much for the presentation.